Call the June 11th, 2024 meeting of the Christiansburg Town Council to order. And as we always do, we take a moment of reflection. And I would ask that you keep the family of Jeremy Compton, our firefighter who lost a struggle with cancer in his period last week. But if you'd keep him and his family and any of your families and friends in your thoughts. So let's take a moment. Thank you. If you would stand and join us for the players, I'm going to ask Councilperson Daniel Hackett to leave this.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
I would really like to separate from the consent agenda the item E.
Okay. Reason?
Um, can I say when we go to vote for it? I just-
Do I have a second to the motion?
A second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion?
I would really, I don't think that there should be any changes to it.
Well, that's just a set of public hearings.
I see what we're doing scheduling a public hearing.
I understand, but-
A set of public hearing, but down the road, you can make those comments if you'd like when it comes up before address. But, I mean, you stated your position and that's good. So all those in favor of this request, I need Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
No.
Councilwoman Berman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett?
Nay.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Nay.
That's three, three, two. I will vote with a nay simply because this is only to set the public hearing. There will be a chance, several chances to comment on this particular section, not only in the public hearing when we schedule and then two weeks later when we bring it before council. Thank you. Any other adjustments? Hearing none, I will close this. There are no public hearings scheduled for tonight. We have the consent agenda, which is the approval of the minutes of May 28, 2024, a contract renewal number two with ACOM Technical Services, annual bridge inspections and engineering services in the amount not to exceed $150,000 per task or work completed per contract year not to exceed $500,000. Contract two renewal with SCS Engineering, Inc., professional engineering service, post-closure landfill engineering and monitoring in an amount not to exceed $150,000 per task order or with the work completed per contract year not to exceed $500,000. A resolution in support of the fiscal year 2027 VDOT State Good Bridge Repair Program funding application and scheduled public hearing for June the 25th for consideration of the amendment to the Christiansburg Town Code, Chapter 40, Subsection 40-2, definition and Section 40-3 Administrator to allow for consistency with the state code and additional administrative and planning commission reviews. Some move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Do we have any discussions?
I think regarding this, it's not that I'm getting that the vote didn't go the way I wanted to because that's okay, but because of this item not being removed, I just feel like I want a vote nay on it.
Okay. Any other comments or discussions? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Uh-huh.
Councilwoman Berman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Nay.
Councilwoman Hockett?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
That is five, one. Thank you very much. Under introductions and presentations, we have Aquatics Director Terry Colwell to present on the Aquatics Program and Operations. Terry?
Good evening, Mayor Barber and council members. As always, it is a pleasure to come before you this evening and to update you about our Aquatic Center. So I hope you enjoy the presentation and find out a little bit more about what we do over at the Aquatic Center. So in 2010, we opened our Aquatic Center. That means that in July of this year, we'll be open 14 years. I don't know about each of you, but that's amazing to me, you know, that we've been operating for 14 years. We are open 73 hours a week, Monday through Sunday. We follow the guidance of our aquatic advisory board, and they are pictured here. Shirley Halleck, our co-chair is Amelia Tuckwiler, Karen Drake, our chairman is Steve Simmons, and of course, our council liaison is Councilwoman Sam Bishop. This group of people, although they look small, have a huge role in what they do to operate our facility. We discuss many things during the meetings that come to the table, whether it's a request from a citizen or a citizen would like to speak or for me to get their guidance on how they would like us to operate at the Aquatic Center. So I appreciate our little meetings with them all the time, and we also have laughs and fun during our meetings. The Aquatic Center staff is comprised of 12 full-time people. Of those 12, eight of us are on the leadership team. And our leadership team meets approximately once a month to discuss what's coming up in the next month, meaning what do we have to organize, what do we need to get ready? If it's about a swim meet, flipping lanes, and you all know that the pools change operation almost daily from whatever event it is that we hold to even classes. So it's important that our citizens keep up with the schedule online. We have 92 part-time employees. That is the custodial and maintenance crew, our lifeguards, front desk, our swim instructors and coaches, water fitness instructors and operations assistants. As you can see, there's a lot of certifications that are required to run an Aquatic Center, and I'm proud to stand before you and to say that those certifications are all up to date and we run an extremely safe facility. It is going to be very rare that you're ever going to hear that the water is not safe at the Aquatic Center, right? It's ice clear. If there's been an accident, meaning a defecation in the water, as we had today, the pool closes immediately and it's closed for the rest of the afternoon today. So when you came through, you may have noticed that. And prior to that, we had several hundred children in the water and all of a sudden we noticed something, right? So what that means, everybody comes out of the water and we have to disinfect and sanitize. So those certifications are extremely important and not only held by the leadership team. There's a lot of part-time staff that hold those certifications. We train all of our lifeguards in-house if they haven't come to us trained, and we also provide the American Red Cross, AED and first aid CPR training in-house. Every employee at the Aquatic Center has that training. To keep on discussing a little bit more of the staff training, once a year, we hold a mandatory all-staff-in-service. And the reason it's once a year is imagine what it's like to try to get 92 part-time employees gathered for a mandatory in-service. Most of them are high school or college students. So our mandatory in-service is held typically on Sunday evenings, and we close the pool early on that one Sunday to hold this training. We invite our police department and our fire department, and we go through different topics on evacuations, fire drills, all of that stuff is covered, and we operate under their guidance and it just works out perfect. I also get the opportunity to discuss customer service, and I remind the staff that there's two, three important, really important items at the Aquatic Center. One is safety, safety of our water and safety of our patrons. So that's very important. We're there to prevent drowning. That's the number one goal that we have. Our second is customer service. So we train heavily on customer service. When someone comes through the door, we want you to be greeted and we want, when you leave, that we're saying goodbye to you and see you when you come back. Very neat. Sexual harassment, we cover that, and then we have a little fun, too. We play some games and imagine with all that staff, a lot of them don't see each other all the time. Some of them don't even know each other, you know? So it's really neat for everybody to get together. Then we divide out every month and the supervisors of the leadership team train their group. So that's the monthly divisional in-services for the front desk and the lifeguards and swim instructors. That's when we do things as an evacuation from the 17-foot deep end if there's an injury on the diving tower. So as you can imagine, I think some people don't really consider what it takes to run that facility, but it's pretty dedicated staff to make sure that our patrons are safe. Talk a little bit about our memberships. So memberships at the Christiansburg Aquatic Center, the adults are $10 if you're a resident, a child is five, and if you're a non-resident, which we call guests, they're $15 or $10 a month, right? So you can see here, the darker blue are our residents in May of '24. Pretty nice number. You can see that trickled up pretty good in May, didn't it? When our busiest month is June, I'm looking forward to see how this goes. And then the non-resident or our guest are $389 for May. Scott produces this for me every month and it's really neat. You know, the first thing I do is I look at May '23 and May '24, and I'm wanting that number to always look better than the year before. So then we move to daily visits. So these are the folks that are not sure if they want to purchase a monthly membership. A daily visit at the Aquatic Center is $6. And as you can see, look who's really riding that, our non-residents or our guests. So what a wonderful number that is, almost 2,000 guests to the town of Christiansburg in the month of May, you know, paying that $6 pass. So I think that's just amazing. And the reason the resident number is down a little bit, because your residents are purchasing the membership, right? They've realized for $10 a month, they can come to the Aquatic Center every day if they would like. So as again, we show May '23, May '24, what wonderful numbers we have. I feel like this fiscal year is going to be really nice.
Do you think that a lot of that is because of the kids being out of school, I'm sure, too, right?
So not in May, in June. June is the busiest month, but those were May numbers. So yeah, I was really proud to see those May numbers. The other months, remember, if there's swim meets, you're not going to get as many people maybe purchase a membership because we talked to them about that. You know, March is a big month. There's going to be a lot of days where maybe you're not going to be able to use the facility. So really go home and figure out if it's worth the $10 for you per month.
Oh, no, it's great.
Yeah, so it works out pretty good. And remember that we have a partnership with the city of Radford. I'm always proud of this partnership because, you know, in 2016, you know, the goal was to look for other ways to bring revenue into the town of Christiansburg through our Aquatic Center, and I'm pleased to say almost 5,000 visits for 2023 from Radford City. From the beginning, we're looking at almost $110,000 in revenue from Radford City. That's an amazing figure that has helped us since 2016. So when we talk about special events, there's always a fun one, and it's Beach Bash, and we're going to play this little video for you really quick. It goes quick and it's fun, and I want you to see what Beach Bash is like. Christina in our public relations department gets credit for that. She does a great job with these videos and, you know, it just makes you smile to see people having fun like they are. Another one of our special events is our New Year Splash, and that was designed for children. So it is held the night before New Year's so that all of our youth can come out and have a little fun. They actually receive a plastic champagne glass and they get to toast apple juice or grape juice, and we have the big ball drop from the 10-meter tower. There's usually music, paddle boarding, the diving boards are open, music, and of course, any of our special events, the mermaids are present and so is the pirate. So that's kind of our key signature at the Aquatic Center. And if you notice any of the, like Wilderness Trail Festival, usually the pirate is there and we're handing out free passes to the Aquatic Center. Kind of what we try to represent. Another one of the special events that I enjoy doing, this is kind of something that we started a special year, couple of years ago. This is outside of our Aquatic Center, but it's at our skate park, and it's the Skate Park Showdown, and it is a partnership with Greenhouse Board Shop. And those guys over there bring all the judges for this event, and he brings all the free prizes and just an amazing, excuse me, partnership that we have with them. I wanted to share just a couple other slides with the skate park because I think it's important for us to see, you know, the talent that goes into some of these boarders down there. This isn't just, you know, sometimes we say, oh, there's trouble at the skate park, and it's not always trouble, right? So I thought it was important for you to see this group of people and, you know, they're, some of them are young, but most of them are going to be 30, 30 years old. I don't think I had anyone under the age of 25 in the competition. So this is your older group of folks with some extreme talent. They've been doing this for years. They, you know, typically work other jobs and then they come down here. That's what the skateboarders do at the skate park, okay? I want to note that there's some new benches and picnic tables along the side there. We put them in. Thank you, council, for approving that in the budget so we could add a few more seats down there at the skate park. And so just kind of neat. There's people that have won for years. The gentleman on the far left there, I think probably has maybe I would say 15 trophies in his house. He wins a lot of the competitions that we have down there. So it's pretty neat. Another special event that we hold is the Pumpkin Splash. This is one of Jillian's favorite, and the children get to decorate pumpkins and go to different tables, and she has food, and the mermaids, of course, are there, and it's just a great time for all of the youth. Every month, we hold Tackle the Tower. This is the only time that the public is allowed to jump off the diving boards. So we have both of the springboards open at that time and the five-meter tower. It's pretty neat to see the kids go up there and they're finally walking on the tower. And if you haven't ever walked up to the top of the tower and you would like to, please let me know because that is a view and something that will continue to make you wonder why anybody would jump off of that. The Finn Swim Team is neat. That is one of our programs, ages six through 18. We offer that in the fall and winter. And what this is, is a precursor to the H2Oaks or competitive swimming. In this Finn Swim Team, they're going to learn the competitive strokes, they're going to kind of go through how the season works for competitive swimming. It's just really a neat transition. And of course, if you haven't heard, Finn Summer Camp is extremely popular at the Aquatic Center. We now have online registration for that, and we let, we open it up on a Saturday morning, and by Monday morning, typically by Saturday night, it's full. That's 35 children each week for eight weeks, and the camp is full. We offer different weekly themes, swim lessons, they get to come in the morning to swim time, we have arts and crafts, they walk to Depot Park and do some sports and games. And as you can see here, this is Meet the Mayor Day. So the mayor gets to come to the Aquatic Center and all the kids get to ask him questions. And it's never about local government, it's about his dog. So that's kind of interesting, but a real fun group and a time with them, and we really enjoy that. And we held a lot of fitness classes at the Aquatic Center. In fiscal year 2223, we had 762 fitness classes with over 800 participants. Swim lessons, again, remember, that's our mission and our vision to prevent drowning in our community, so obviously swim lessons are imperative. We continue to provide swim lessons for Montgomery County Public Schools. That partnership is with the Blacksburg Lions Club, and we've seen 801 participants with the second grade swim lessons this year. Also, McCarg Elementary out of Radford brings their second graders. We provide private and group swim lessons, and as you can see, we average over 300 private swim lessons per month, which is huge. It's very, you're very much on a waiting list if you're calling for swim, private swim lessons. Birthday parties and after-hours are always fun at the Aquatic Center. You can, you know, rent the leisure pool after hours and enjoy your family where it's just you. And we provide the lifeguards and we lighten up the rules a little bit for you, and you can have fun and food on the pool deck. And birthday parties in fiscal year 2223, we had 123, and after-hour parties, 52. Swim meets, I'm not going to cover much on that since Nate and I were just here a couple months ago and discussed a lot about the competitive pool, but as you can see there, for fiscal year 2223, we held 43 swim meets. We were closed 24 days of the year for those swim meets. We've seen over 8,000 swimmers and over 57,000 spectators. Upcoming, I would like to thank you for your vote on the H2Oak building. That should be a really nice asset to the field, the world of swimming at the Christiansburg Aquatic Center. It's amazing kind of where, how far-reaching that our facility is. One of our advisory board members is currently in Europe, and she met someone on the bus in Scotland who is from Australia, and their son came to the Christiansburg Aquatic Center to train under Sergio Lopez for one of his swimming trainings. So pretty neat how that conversation started for her on the bus. On June 20th, this free day at the Christiansburg Aquatic Center. So the Virginia Parks and Recreation Department has an initiative, and it's called Play All Day on June 20th, and the goal is, since it's the longest day of the year, to provide fun activities. So we decided it was time to have a free day again at the Christiansburg Aquatic Center. The end of the month is our USA Diving Championship, Zoning. That will be athletes from North Carolina all the way up to Maine. It's pretty neat meet. If you're interested in seeing diving off the 10-meter tower, that would be the time. The slide here just shows some of our sponsorships. We have these sponsors at the Aquatic Center. They pay $1,000 a year to have their logo up on the big screen. That also includes two TVs within the Aquatic Center, and then they're listed in our brochure. So that's all I have for you this evening. Do you have any questions?
Yes, great presentation, by the way.
Thank you.
It's awesome. I have a question for you. I know that you guys do a wonderful program that you mentioned before, which is the swimming for teaching kids how to swim at young ages. I know during COVID, that was very difficult to do. You're doing that again from what I see, but I was seeing some of the news the other day and stuff about all the grants that you can get, and I was wondering if we could or have you looked into those already? I was just actually searching online, too. There is like the swim grants from the USA Swimming Team. They're actually just giving a whole bunch of grants if you're able to participate and how to teach kids how to swim. I know that there was the numbers this year, like, I don't have those numbers right now, but I know that they skyrocket within the last year for kids, you know, getting, you know, dying from not being able to, you know-
From drowning?
Yeah.
Kids drowning, so. So the goal is obviously yes, to prevent that. We do look into the grants and we read over them, and if we can apply, we do. There's typically a lot of things in there that put us out, but I am very familiar with the USA Swimming Grant, and we have not been able to apply for that one.
Well, maybe there is other grants because I know like some of the governors and some of the states have been giving those out, and maybe our locality can probably get those. I was just giving a suggestion because I think it's such a good program that you have been able to provide for so many kids.
It really is. It's a great program.
Some of my kids were, well, actually, I think all of them were able to participate, and that was a great thing. And even the, when is the beach thing?
May, the end of May.
At the end of May. I suggest for everybody to go to it because it's really fun. My kids were there and it's fun.
Yep, it is really fun.
Thank you for all the work that you guys do.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Terry, for a good job. 14 years worth of good job.
14 years. Can you believe that, Mayor?
Something else?
A long time.
You're looking younger and younger.
Yes, I feel like I'm 25.
There you go.
Very good, very good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Recently, our Recreation Department received an award that I wanted to, wanted to bring Brad up and let him explain it. It is the Renee S. Brown Award presented by the Arc of the New River Valley. And Brad, will you take it from there and show us your award?
Sure, yeah. So, so good evening, Mayor, council members, all citizens. This is, this is an award that, that our Parks and Recreation Department received from the Arc of the New River Valley. The Arc of the New River Valley is an organization that advocates for individuals with disabilities to enrich their lives, to lead contributing lives and those types of things throughout our community. And so it was really a great honor to be able to receive this award. And, you know, I, while this award was directed at our department, I think it's a town-wide award, the way that I see it, because the dedication that we've been able to provide with the Huckleberry Park, Christiansburg Huckleberry Park, with the inclusive play and accessibility and those types of things, you know, it's taken a long time to get there, but we were able to get there. And so to, to see the advantages of what that park brings, I think is very important. I'll leave you with this. We received the award on Saturday, and then after the award ceremony, there was a young lady that is with the Arc of Virginia, the state, the state board, and she has cerebral palsy. She's approximately 40 years old, and she came up to me and she said, I just want you to know that this Christiansburg Huckleberry Park, there's a couple words I want to give. Freedom is one. I feel free when I'm here. She's wheelchair-bound, and that was probably some of the most sensitive and compassionate words I think I've ever heard in my life, to know that something that we all did brought, you know, freedom and those types of things of inclusive play to somebody. And it was just really special. So thank you all. Just wanted to make sure you next.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. I got it mentioned back on what the mayor said. I'm really grateful about the inclusive playground at the Rex, at the new park, especially because for many years when the whole meetings were happening at the Rex Center about what you wanted at the new park, I was one of those people that was very, my son was in a wheelchair at the time. I was driving two hours north, two hours south to be able to give my son that experience. So getting in a wheelchair, you know, swing or being able to do a lot of the things that we take for granted. So I was, that's one of the things that I actually really enjoy about the park. I think just the fact that it can bring so many kids that have disabilities or non-disabilities to ability to be just like everybody else. So thank you and great work.
Now, as our, part of the Agitator Citizens' comments, it is a, most of you know that the general rules to it, it's three minutes, name and address, and direct your comments to the chair. Anyone here like to address council? Anyone here like to address council?
Christine Waltz, 1370 Rigby Street. I'm here on behalf of Tube Guy, who I put next to Kim. I hear this, I was, this many years minus two weeks when I found out that inflatables are considered signs. And I had, it left me with a lot of, as I was telling Mr. Broton, it left me with a lot of questions. As a citizen, I can put up inflatables in my yard during the holidays. Some of them actually do move. There's Snoopy popping out of the, and so it was kind of confusing to me as a citizen to find out that businesses don't have that same opportunity. And it left me with kind of a sour taste in my mouth. It was actually kind of funny, because the little Tube Guys, I've never really found them super interesting. There are a lot of them. And it turns out they have a really interesting history. They, the person who created it, he was a costume designer. And he got involved with somebody who did inflatable art, which I found out was a thing. And they created it for the Olympics in 1996. And in 1998, he went to the Grammys and he went to the Super Bowl. So something I did not know about it. A lot of times, we tend to think, take, take our own personal views and go, well, this is tacky. But it is art to some people. And I also want to see businesses have the same opportunities to express themselves as we as citizens do. Thank you.
Joanne, I believe you beat him up by about a knee length.
Hi, good evening. I'm Joanne Price, Blacksburg, Virginia, but I have a store in Christiansburg. And I just want to speak to the idea that Town Council no longer having or would no longer have the ability to approve lot line adjustments. I think that this is, and I'm actually speaking on behalf of my husband, who owns a lot of real estate. I see this is a really big problem. There's three things here. Number one is, is that the job of Town Council is to hold town employees accountable. So if you remove that accountability, then who's going to hold them accountable? We don't elect them. They work for us. We elect you to protect us. And so we would like for you to continue that. The other thing is, is that we remove the ability to have public hearings so that we would know when these situations would happen. Sometimes they could be detrimental to one party or the other party. But if we don't know that it is happening, then there's no way for us to identify those situations and circumstances to you so that you can make a good decision that's on, on behalf of both parties. The other thing is Planning Commission management. I mean, you know, when you, when you're a bureaucrat, or you're an employee of the town or government, and I've been one, I've also been an entrepreneur. We don't have the same viewpoint as someone who's sitting behind the desk, who doesn't see all sides. And so I think it's very important that that viewpoint is given and made available. The main thing is, is that we absolutely want you, as town members, to maintain the authority. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's Matt Hicks. Pick an address, 607-605, I got multiple ones anyway. I'm, ditto with, with Joanne there. I think losing the public hearings and it taking out of your power is a big problem for the citizens and business owners, period. I come from a little different angle there, had a little different discussion. I own three buildings downtown, very much in the heartbeat of the Central Business District. And I'm very much opposed, as I've said multiple times, about any closures of any streets, specifically Hickok Street and Pepper Street. I've gone to lengths to meet with Randy and Andrew and the engineering guys about Pepper Street to see if there's a way we can work around it, make, make an agreement, figure something out. The bottom line is, for commercial real estate, as I'm a real estate investor, and that's what I do for a living, have done it for a long time, since 1996 coming to the town, it's going to decrease the value of property, because traffic count, period, is number one for commercial real estate. So I have two properties that are directly impacted. One on Collis Street by closures of Hickok Street, I'm going to lose traffic count, which means I'm going to lose value. My real estate office and my rental building has four rentals. Pepper Street's going to be drastically affected. So I don't know if you guys have thought far enough ahead or what your plans are doing there, but, and I don't know where to address the question. I'd like to be updated personally as a citizen, and secondly, as a business person, if there's changes going on weekly. I don't think I should have to scour the news and look for when is a public meeting to come in to hear about it. And if I mention that to Randy, then can you just send an email or send a letter? I mean, it's, it's kind of a closed-door thing, even though you guys are representing us and voting for us. I understand you're following protocol, you haven't done anything wrong. But the public hearings being denied, if all that's put in their hands, will directly affect the owners and the citizens as a whole. So I just ask for more communication, and if I can get an answer back on, how can I get even, even further past that communication on Hickok and Pepper Street? I'd definitely be interested. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'd like just a little.
Name and address, please.
I'm sorry, sir. Michael Bishop, 105 Fourth Street here in Christiansburg. I'm here to express my concern over a town ordinance where you are not allowed to have ducks in your yard. I'm not speaking for myself, I'm speaking for a neighbor of mine. He has a number of young children that really appreciates having ducks around. There's only four of them. But for some reason, it is against the town regulation or town code. And I just don't understand that, ladies and gentlemen, because people can have a large dog running around the backyard, cats, there's, you know, squirrels runs around, rabbits runs around, there's birds. So I'm just, it just kind of struck me as not being fair. And I would like to address the town council about that. And if you have some questions for me. Also, sir, I live right beside of the neighbor. It's not a problem for me. I don't really know what the concern is. If anyone has a question to ask me.
Andrew, do you have any thoughts on that one?
Why is it in the code? It's against that.
Keeping foul isn't allowed in residential neighborhoods with the exception of the urban agriculture keeping of, basically, hens for laying up to six. That's, that's all that's allowed in residential neighborhoods, as far as foul.
And do you have an absolute reason behind it? Like, is it their quacking, or what is it?
I, I think it could be the noise. It could be the kind of sanitation and cleanliness of, of keeping of pens, particularly if it was large numbers.
With all respect, sir, it's, the backyard is about half an acre large. And as for noise, all of y'all probably know a dog barks.
There is a differential between domestic pets, cats and dogs, barking and meowing, and game fowl. What's, it is a game.
We actually have a parking dog provision in town code.
That's code enforcement. I guess your neighbors have been notified they have to remove?
Yes, sir, they have, but I believe they are appealing that, especially for their young children. They're quite attached to them. And it's just four ducks, sir. I just, I mean, I'm sorry, I just, maybe it's one of these cases. Yeah, it's maybe it's one of these cases where y'all can't explain it to me, and maybe I can explain it to y'all. But it just kind of seems unfair, sir.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much for your consideration.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the citizens' comments. We will go into committee, committee report, street committee report.
Okay, ready? All right, this is a request for a plot located on Depot Street and Hollis Street. Back in January 25th, 2022, Town Council approved the request then to, for these subdivision of townhomes. For some reason, due to the time, the owner of that town did not follow through, so everything stopped. This piece of property now is under new ownership. They are requesting to, to bring back the same plot. Nothing's, nothing has changed but ownership. Basically, what they're going to be doing is be seven townhomes, I think, up here on Hollis Street, and three on Depot Street. And there will be open space. Once again, let's say, in 2022, Town Council approved this request. So at this time, the street committees make a recommendation to approve the request once again.
Is it a motion?
It is.
Second.
Got a motion in the second. Any comments or questions? I guess first question I have, I know we've approved this three or four years ago.
2022.
Have, have any ordinances or requirements changed over from the original approval to this that would have?
Not that would impact this subdivision.
All right, any other comments?
So what was the motion about? The motion was to.
Just approve those townhouses, the ones that are up on the board, for a new owner.
Oh, just for a new owner, but because this did come up, yeah.
Any other comments? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop. Councilwoman Bowman. Councilwoman Hicks. Councilwoman Hackett. Councilman Jenkins. Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
That is 60. Under discussions and actions by mayor and council, first to set the personal property tax rate for fiscal year 2425 at 45 cents per hundred of assessed value. So move.
Second.
Any discussions, comments, questions?
Is this a, this is not an increase, correct?
It's the same as last year.
All right, just to make sure.
Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop. Councilwoman Bowman. Councilwoman Hicks. Councilwoman Hackett. Councilman Jenkins. Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
That is 60. Thank you. Set real property tax rate, real estate property tax rate fiscal year 2425 at 14 cents per hundred, which is not an increase. So move.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any comments or questions?
It is 14 cents. It was 16 cents. We went down 14 cents, but obviously, because of the reassessment, it was, it did go up some, so. But I'm okay with it.
But the dollar figure, the, the 14 cents figure is the same figure we had last year?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop. Councilwoman Bowman. Councilwoman Hicks. Councilwoman Hackett. Councilman Jenkins. Councilman Wilson.
That is 60. The resolution to adopt the fiscal year 2425 budget. So move.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any discussions? Comments, questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop. Councilwoman Bowman. Councilwoman Hicks. Councilwoman Hackett. Councilman Jenkins. Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
I need a resolution for appropriations for the fiscal year 2425 budget.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, this is the resolution to approve the budget. Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? All righty, Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop. Councilwoman Bowman. Councilwoman Hicks. Councilwoman Hackett. Councilman Jenkins. Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
This is 60. Thank you, Val, thank you and your department managers, department heads. Thank you for your work on these, on these budgets. It just seems like now, tomorrow, you can start on next year's.
Right.
That's about right. Okay, next on the agenda is downtown special events communications procedure. Randy, is that yours?
Yes. Staff prepared this procedure just to basically formalize what we are doing in regards to notifications. And we just want to, I guess, kind of run it by council to make sure that you're in, I guess, agreement with the policy as we've drafted it. And we have added, I guess, kind of a few new items for notifications that we plan on doing going forward. But it is, like I say, just to try to basically ensure that we're doing what we need to do in terms of outreach for special events.
So what do you need from us?
Are you good with the policy? Just a general consensus, or vote either one?
I'm going to make some comments about this. So do you guys, do you need a motion on this, or?
If you'd like to, if you would like to vote, that would be fine. If you have any suggested changes for discussion, that would be fine too.
I would like some suggested options on this. Now, we may have to change my wording here or whatever, because I don't have a script. But where I am part of two or more businesses, maybe, or maybe not affected by this event, I will, I guess I can just make a disclaimer that I own.
If you have a conflict of interest, you can.
Okay, I may have a conflict of interest, because I own Engle Flora's Downtown Christiansburg. But the, I do want to make some, but I can make some comments about this.
If you're one of three or more businesses that could be affected.
I.
So you disclose that comment.
Probably just the only retail, but we are more than one business down there, so. Which it may or may not be affected by this. So I just want to make a suggestion is, I was looking at the paper, which, yeah, you have it up there. You guys were putting it in there, which, one of the reasons for like Mother's Day, we found out like two weeks before the event happened, Downtown Christiansburg for the closing. So, and it was online, and we didn't receive anything until after I mentioned something, then we did receive something. I do think that, I know that you guys are saying 45 days for you guys, and then after that, you're going to give stuff to tourism, which we're pulling out of tourism, from my understanding. And then DCI, obviously, you know, they, they don't come down and check on us or whatever. And then you have, the other one was through the Chamber of Commerce, which a lot of businesses like myself don't participate in that. So one of the, I guess my concern is, if my only way to find out about this event would be going through online, I think that's very unfair. Now, you guys are saying that you will be coming and telling us two weeks to one week before this. That's not enough time, because for a lot of these events, as businesses, we're planning months ahead. For Mother's Day, you're planning three months ahead before these events take place. And so I will just say, this is not a complaint, but, and it was, I think, very wrongly used last time when I spoken over here about trying to have some open communication with the businesses. It's not a complaint. And I wasn't going over there as a complaint. I chose to do that. And it's just trying to have a relationship with the town where they understand where we come from. Because it's not an event that you can just plan two weeks ahead, and hey, here we go, we're going to close the streets, and now we got to shut down the business. Does that make any sense, Brad? Do you have it?
Well, on Mother's Day, we were able to adjust.
You were, but it was last minute. I found out within last minute, and there was some planning, which I was grateful that it was moved. But there was still communication to people that the street was going to be closed until a week before. And so I do think that maybe before you guys make any of those changes at last minute, it would be good for us to know a little bit more ahead.
One thing I'll point out with that first bullet item, the Small Business Solutions Manager would receive a list of standing events from the Special Events Coordinator, and then they would deliver the list to downtown businesses. And that's going to be a list of all the events that we know for the coming year. I can't guarantee you it'll be every event, because we have town-sponsored events that are ours that can come in with potentially a 45-day notice, because that's what the program requires. But beyond that, we will give you a list of all of our planned events and any known town-sponsored events, town sanctioned events. So all town-sponsored events and any known, known town sanctioned events.
It further goes on to say four to six weeks prior to the event, that, you know, if you scroll down a little bit, Andrew, that they're going to. that, that they're gonna create event campaigns, including all this stuff, so they, there, there's more added in there, and then two weeks prior, and then the week of the event, so there's multiple notifications to those affected by...
Well...
By the way I see it.
That is loss of revenue, and it can be impact a business drastically. Especially, for example, we had an event this weekend, and it was great that he was there, but the, the, you know, the business had to shut down. We were able to open it later, but there were no sales, because people are especially coming to these events to drink and have fun, you know? And so I think, you know, is the problem is not having the events, the problem is the closing, the, the time that it happens. And then having the events later on in the day, when you lose all the revenue during the daytime. Now, you were mentioning something about, um, the first item that was, can you go back up, Randy, please?
The January thing?
No.
All the way up to the top, at the first bullet?
Yeah, so you said a small business solution manager. That's Amanda, right?
Correct.
Well, I can tell you as a business owner, she has never shown up to speak about any of the events, anything of anything.
That, she would be starting doing that, if you notice, to begin, January of twenty-twenty-five, and, and all the items in yellow would be new, new things that are added to, to what we're currently doing.
Brad, you submit on the, it seems like the first part of January. Don't they publicize the first six months' worth of events? Don't we see? Cause I, that was sent out on, on, uh, either through public information or through you or somebody. It was sent out and shared.
So, so there, there is a, um, public relations handles sending out basically things through social media that, that has like the, the, the events that are sort of standing events that we know that we're gonna have. I, I can't tell you the exact date that that was sent out. I think it was sometime in February that that was sent out. At that time, we normally update our websites and those types of items as well. You know, when we got into that, that's why we, we looked at it and we said, okay, maybe there's a different way that we can do that on top of what we're doing. And that's, that's where the, the small business solutions aspect came up to where we can go by, or the small business manager can go by and, and meet with the downtown folks to give them a full year of what we know is, is, is occurring and happening. You know, there, there are things like, for instance, we had a, we had a request for a special event. I don't know, it's probably been, been two weeks ago now, to, to be able to have another event downtown. They had since, you know, decided to go to another location. But, you know, those types of things do come in and such. But like for our standing events, we know like Rockin' Main, we know, uh, uh, basically like Wilderness Trail Festival, Heritage Day, those types of items, Fire Parade, homecomings, you, you don't know exactly which state it is, but you can generally find out when homecoming is that year, you know, at that time. But what we try to do is we try to put those events, um, you know, out there so people do know. And this is just another step of being able to try to, to, to deliver it to those downtown businesses to try to improve that communication, so they, they have that knowledge and understanding, um, all the way through. But yes, so, you know, from a social, social media standpoint, I, I believe it was in February is when our, um, uh, public relations sent that information out. We also have it on, um, the events that we know that we, we are doing. We have that also on our brochures, on the back of our brochures that, that we send out as well. We try to do a, a spring and summer and a fall winter as, as well.
So like, for example, for the Mother's Day event, you actually had that out there since February?
I think it was February, I think it was sometime in February on social media, you know?
Well, I, I sometimes check on Facebook and stuff like that, but I shouldn't have to check on Facebook to look at this event, so...
Yeah.
And my husband has no way to look it up, or any of us, you know, my kids don't have access to it. So I think that, you know, I just think that that's not the way we should be communicating. And I'm just saying that as a, you know, not just for myself, but for others, I'm sure that... Cause I would like to be communicated about these things.
And I think that's what they, what they've said here is, is that...
Adding these items, because I understand, you know, what you were saying. And, and so that was why we, we tried to add some different things in there, so that we can find a better way of communication in those types of items. And, and so the January item is, is a brand-new thing, um, where we can come up with the list that we have at that time, you know, that, that we know of, and then to be able to, to, to communicate that to the businesses and those types of things.
And then Brad, I, that's great that you're doing that, because...
When there's public relations, public relations...
Well, but then too, another thing to add to that is not just the, the January thing. Because as you very well know, you were just saying things change. We would like to know as soon as those changes start happening, because we need to be prepared of what to do, you know? I plan out for things to do with kids and everything this Saturday, and obviously, you know, kids showed up. It was a small amount of kids that showed up. So I want to figure out what is it that we can do to also help our business, if that's the, the thing to help other businesses and not just mine, but to be able to have, you know, because the town does benefit from sales and revenue too. And we want people to come downtown for different reasons, not just to come down there to, you know, for an event like that.
I think this is a, a great effort in what, what, moving forward, and obviously it can be, uh, everything can be improved upon. So with that said, if you need a, a motion to approve this means of communication at this time, I, I make a motion that, that we approve what they're doing.
Seven.
Got a motion in the second. Since it is under discussion by mayor and council, I think that it is best that we do approve this. That way it becomes a matter of public record and is acted on by the council. Any com, any other questions?
Mayor, I'll just add, I, I like Joanna, represent an employee of an organization of, that's grouping in one or, one of three or more affected by a policy like this one, um, just to throw that out there in the Montgomery Museum. I personally don't have any issues with the policy or the added language at this time.
Okay.
You got that wording right on it, no?
Anything, anyone else? Ms. Hamlin?
Councilman Bishop?
Uh.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
That is six oh. Thank you. Town manager report?
Just a point of clarification in regards to subdivisions. We, we don't require public hearings for subdivisions now. Um, so that, that's not gonna change. We still wouldn't have public hearings. They just wouldn't appear on the council agenda under the street committee reports. Um, it'd be handled more like a site plan, as an administrative review.
Explain, this is also a smaller, it's not a two-hundred-and-fifty-unit subdivision. These are small...
It would, it would be proposed to, for a smaller subdivision, and council could set that number at whatever number you see fit. Some, some localities use five lots, ten lots, but if it's a larger subdivision, you still want it to come back to council. You, you could still have that option.
Okay, very good.
And, and we, we still will have to have public hearings for rezonings and conditional use permits, because that's state law.
Okay. What else you got?
Uh, just wanna point out that we've got the town council work session for the retreat this Thursday at two PM, and that'll be here in the admin conference room. And I'll mention that town hall is gonna be closed on Wednesday, June nineteenth for the June, Juneteenth holiday.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Do you know how long that's going to be, or a day and a half, but the agenda had no time for schedule?
It, it is two to six-thirty is what we're planning. If we can get out a little bit earlier.
Wasn't it like online, two to four or something like that? Cause I saw it.
Yeah, I think it automatically generates the two hour, but we've, we've adjusted that to six-thirty.
And when was it adjusted?
This afternoon.
But there is no Friday, right?
No Friday.
Was that canceled last Monday, or did I just...
We, we never put out an agenda with a Friday. We mentioned it as a possibility of a meeting, meeting, additional meeting time.
I think we even discussed it was gonna be on Wednesday and Thursday at one point. So, no, it is a, a nice, good, hard, six-hour...
Six hours, four and a half?
Four and a half.
Depends on how long we talk. So, uh, it will be an intense time. I've seen the agenda, and there was some homework given to you by Kevin about some things that are very early in the thing that he wants you to write specific comments about, so I will warn you all to, to please read your emails. Okay. Anything else, Randy?
That's all I have.
All right, um, Randy? Well, any other staff?
Yeah, the other thing I would add to your conversation you were having earlier regarding notifications is this past week, we looked at a piece of the software that goes with, initially, we thought it was just related to utility billing that would allow us, if people have their phone numbers, mobile phones, and emails, um, with us, we can send out specific notifications to specific areas. So for example, if there's a water break in a specific section, we can send emails or text messages to just that section. And that's kind of why we were looking at it, but in looking at the whole program, we're gonna pull Christina into that, because we can use it to notify all of our utility residents, all of our business owners, any group that is in our databases can be notified about events, emergencies, special events, parades, emergencies, whatever. So it is a huge piece of being able to get the word out electronically, um, through text and email. So I think that might be a big plus, once we bring that on and get that up and running, um, to help with this, because Amanda could have just the list of the business owners in the downtown district and send emails or text messages to just those people, so that as plans change or plans are made, you can be updated on that. So, um, it's not a horribly expensive piece of the software. It's about ten thousand dollars.
It's a drop in the bucket, what the thing cost us.
Cost of the software, if you put it that way. But it, it's, I think, extremely valuable in being able to better communicate with the citizenry about all subject matters, not just related to our utility billing, but all business matters, and can be used that way, which I think is, is really beneficial.
Very good. Very, very good.
Thank you for that information.
All right, uh, council reports. I will mention a couple of things first and foremost to congratulate the Christiansburg High School girls softball team for the, uh, Region Three State Championship this past weekend. We, uh, they, they came back from Charlottesville, and they got into town about the time Rockin' Main Street was, was really in the middle, so we were able to bring them out and, uh, recognize them. They got stepped, straight off the bus, still in uniform and everything, so that was pretty nice. And I would like to, you know, as we have done with, with others in the past, I'd like to maybe we, uh, work on a night that we can bring them in and recognize them with a, with a resolution to the school. So I'll be working on that, if that's all in the council.
Yes.
And, and the other thing that I will bring up is we've had some very interesting news on Passenger Rail. There is movement toward bringing it back instead of over to Mall or over on Sonobar. There's movement to bring it back to Cambria, and we hope that that's gonna work. There's some agreements that, uh, the state and, um, Passenger Rail Authority have signed that, uh, basically it's a review period till September. And I think during that time, I think, uh, I'm, I'm sure that, that Norfolk Southern has been down and surveying the site as, as, and I think Passenger Rail Group has too. But someone told me Monday, there was like forty people in vests walking around down there looking and writing down. It's, it's a possibility, and not, you know, it's, uh, it's not over till it's over, but we, this is for years. For five years, we were told it's never gonna happen there. You're not gonna do it, you're gonna put it somewhere else. But, but, uh, I think the cooler heads prevailed within the state and within the Norfolk Southern system, so, uh, that's what I got to offer on, uh...
Mr. Bishop? I don't have anything. Thank you.
That's six.
Yeah, there is gonna be a board meeting for the agency on aging and, um, on June twenty-fifth at one PM. Just a reminder, um, people can actually go to these meetings. It's gonna be at the New River Valley Agency on Aging, Forty-Fourth Third Street Northwest in Pulaski, Virginia, if anybody would like to sit down for those meetings, and they have snacks, but they are longs, long meetings, so...
Thank you, um...
Oh, yeah, and the fund, well, we can talk about it.
You have, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call on you in a minute. Casey?
Heather to report.
Tanya?
Nothing to report.
Tim?
Nothing.
Kim?
Yeah, the, the agency on aging also has a fundraiser on the fifteenth. Tickets are fifty dollars if you'd like to participate in the gourmet meal over at the Esselrod on the news. It sounds like a very nice event.
Very good. Anyone else? Is there any, any more business to come for council?
I wanted, well, I guess this under, can I just mention something about the ducks then? I don't know what the policy says. I don't know about anything regarding the duck stuff. But the more I was thinking about it, the more I remember something that happened to us in one of our rental properties. We had, um, some tenants, not very well-behaved tenants, and they did have ducks, and they ended up bringing them in the house, and they were actually using them for shooting practice with BB guns inside the house. So now that I remembered, it is not just the quacking thing. It can be something else, obviously. You know, um, that was a problem for us, so I don't know, they are probably their, their owners of the property, and I'm sure they're not gonna be doing anything with their ducks, but that was our, my experience and my husband's experience with some of the ducks that were in our place, um, which we're not allowing in the first place. And then I do know that, um, something about, that has nothing to do with ducks, but I do know we also have a policy for like the amount of chickens and things like that, and permits. I, it just came out to my attention just recently from someone that was complaining to me regarding these chickens around their property, and I was actually gonna make a complaint to Randy, but, um, something else came up, that the neighbor contacted the landlord of the property and put them on notice. And one of the things that came up out of that was the, from the person that I spoken in the town, they had said that the animals were used for food scarcity, which it sounds like they have a problem with, you know, they don't have a lot of their resources, and they're using the chickens for getting fed. And the second thing that they came out with was that they were used as emotional animals. And so I, I know for, for landlords, the whole thing about having different types of animals has always been an issue, but I just figured I'll mention that, cause it came up just recently.
You as the landowner would have to sign for that permit for them to come to town, come downtown and get a permit to raise chickens, so... Anything else? This has been a foul meeting, yes?
Uh, you know, just to say, we're allowed to address this in six concerns about, uh, pigeons and dragon, ducks and...
No, I, I'm sorry, that's, uh...
We can talk after.
Yeah, we'll talk after. Derek, supervisor kits, thank you for coming. Public works, guys, thank you. Mike, engineers, Chris, police. We're done.